I'd like to call the Village Council November 9th, 2021, a meeting, a regular meeting, to order. I show the time at 6:03, and I show that we were missing two of the council members, Mayor Protem Vandenberg and Jamie Lyon. But we do have enough for our quorum to continue. First up, I'd like to get a motion to allow council members to participate remotely.
So who?
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Bob, I heard you, so it's unanimous. Next up is adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes? Bob?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
So for the audience, I see quite a few on there. Just for your information to keep this thing going, because there was a little bit of a miscommunication that we were on the agenda. We're still going to have, open it up, the public hearing to consider the Marvin Heritage District. But I'm telling you right now, if you're here for that, then all we are doing is changing the date and continuing it. We had a miscommunication with council members who weren't going to be here, and we felt that it was not appropriate to continue that discussion without everybody here in council. So we will be moving that to another date. We will not be discussing anything. So if you're here for that, and we invite you to still listen into the meeting, which is fine. I think we have a cell phone tower, some people here for that too, but just wanted to make you aware of that. So we will open it up, but then we will...
Move to continue.
Move to continue. And then the second thing I see on the agenda, which I'd like to remove if it's okay with the council members, is the discussion of Marvin Day. Again, we don't have Jamie here, who's kind of heading that up along with Derek. And again, with Mayor Protem Vandenberg not being here, there's really not much to discuss. We can move that to the next meeting. Is that the only thing? Two things? Okay. That's all I have. So with those two recommendations, or the one recommendation to remove the talk about Marvin Day, and then that's it. I need a motion to amend the agenda as stated.
You mean, adopt the agenda?
Adopt the agenda as amended. Okay, I'll get it. It's only 6:05 here. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next up, we have Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's a little warm in here.
Does that just mean?
It's hot.
Is it warm?
You can take your jacket off.
Hopefully, he's dressed up like twice a month now.
Yeah. I don't even do that. All right. First up, we have public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up to speak? We got, are we allowing people to speak online? Anyone?
Yes.
One second. Gary, Gary Vale.
Right, you want to go on?
You're up.
Yeah, so just a reminder, we have, you can be my timer since Tim's not here.
I can do it too.
Or three minutes. We have you state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Or less.
Or less. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Gary Vale, and I live at 1032 Jasper Lane, which is in Amber Meadows. And I will introduce this lady beside me. As you know, this is Tonia McCollum, and she is president of the Baltimore Homeowners Association.
Sorry, can't hear you at all.
Oh, sorry. Can you turn me up?
You just need to stand closer to the microphone.
Yeah, I'm going to sit here, right here.
How's this, better?
Bob, send thumbs up. Go ahead.
Okay. Anyway, you're not going to get the full mighty presentation tonight. Most of you have heard that at least once, maybe more. We just wanted to make sure you knew that we were still here and we weren't going away. And we're after the same thing. We continue to think that tower is in a miserably bad place, and our goal in life right now is to convince the planning board and the Board of Commissioners to agree with us on that. And so that's where we're headed. Our strategy is unchanged. We're turning over lots and lots of rocks, looking for new reasons that it's in the wrong place. And we've had some luck. We've come up with a little environmental thing that we've asked the FCC and some of our North Carolina departments to look into. So that's new since I last saw you. And we'll see where that gets. I mean, we hope it goes somewhere. But the long-term strategy is, they have two hearings, one for the planning board and one for the commissioners. We intend to be at both. We intend to make a presentation at both. And so we're going to bring all the attention to bear on this thing that we can. And we expect to sort of be at those meetings in force. I think they have room for 20 people down there in Monroe, and we'd like to get at least that many to go with us, and we think we can do that. So that's sort of where we are on that. While I've got the microphone, if anybody from the neighborhoods and particularly the task force is listening in, I can't tell you how much work those people have done, including Tonia. We put hours and hours and hours into online research and other things that we might be able to use in our cause, and I just want to thank all those people. The other thing is, at this juncture, it would be remiss if I didn't thank the mayor and the council for nothing in advance, but for being patient and for putting up with us and for listening to us and for even considering a resolution of opposition. We think that's incredibly important if you see fit to do that. We think that could really matter with it, particularly with the commissioners. And we are most grateful that you would consider that. That's already it for now. If you need anything, let us know. We'll be happy to answer questions, but in the meantime, we'll go forth and do good. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
I will say, I met with Gary and Tonia a couple days ago, and they've done a lot of work. For those of you out there, I don't know if you're in the neighborhoods or not, but appreciate all the work that you've done, and I think we'll be inviting you to the WUMA group that I've had and put it again on the discussion. And WUMA, for those in listening land out there on Zoom, I guess, what do you call it?
WebEx.
WebEx. WUMA is Western Union County Municipalities.
Western Union Municipal Alliance.
Municipal Alliance. And it's made up of Wesley Chapel, Weddington, ourselves, and Marvin, and also Mineral Springs.
Installings.
Installings, yes. So it's a good group that we started, it's been almost a year.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, so we'll look forward to that meeting and talking about that as well. Anyone else?
Next up is Tonia.
Tonia.
I don't need to say anything, Gary. You said it all perfectly, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Tonia.
I screwed up here.
Anyone in WebEx that would like to speak? If you can unmute. I don't see anyone. So with that, we will move on to the next discussion. Thank you, Gary and Tonia. Next up.
This is Bob. I just wanted to...
Oh, Bob, okay.
Do you have something?
Bob, just state your name and address, where you're at, please.
Yeah, Bob Boldle, 1031 Jasper Lane in Marvin.
Okay.
And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, hold on, except kept in the loop here on the status of what's being collected so far, just so from the perspective of if we have something else that is possibly being omitted that we could contribute.
We will be sure and do that, and we're learning from the other communities as well, too. I think in our last meeting a couple weeks ago. So thank you. We will make sure and do that and keep you guys informed.
Aye.
Anyone else? I see none. I'm going to move on to the next section of our agenda is presentations. B is discuss and consider adoption of proclamation to honor the life and legacy of Raymond Ray Charles Davy Williams. Born in 1948, passed in 1921.
2021.
2021, sorry. Boy, I'm really losing it. I have 100 years. We have here today, if it's okay with council, I'd like to read the proclamation that we wrote up, and I will stand up and present.
You need to first consider to adopt it.
Oh, sorry. Thanks, the court's keeping me online here, so. Did you guys have a chance to read the proclamation?
Did not. Yeah, I did.
Yeah, you did. We talked.
I remember.
Okay.
Yes, I did.
Any changes, corrections you'd like to make before I present this?
No, sir.
Can I make a comment?
We're through the public comment period.
Richard Williams, Raymond's brother. In his name, you said Davy, it's actually Davis, D-A-B-I-E-S, Davis Williams.
Okay. We have on here Davy, D-A-V-I-E, so we will get that corrected.
I can go correct it right here.
And I can sign a new one that we can put into this, so. So thank you for letting us know that. I'm catching that, quite frankly, so. Do we want to wait, or?
It won't take him but a second, but if you want to read it.
He's that good, so.
Don't forget to get a motion on it.
Yes. So as we're waiting for that, I'd like to get a motion to approve the proclamation to honor the life and legacy of Raymond Ray Charles Davies Williams.
So moved?
Further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. So I'm going to go ahead and read this, and then we'll make sure we get the correction on it. Our apologies on that, so. He's really good, he's already on it. All right, I'm going to just read this for the crowd, so hopefully you guys can hear me. I usually can project here. This date, November 9th, 2021, to honor the life and legacy of Raymond Ray Charles Davies Williams. Whereas the Marvin Village Council, on behalf of all Marvin residents, acknowledges the deep sadness felt by members of our community by the loss of Ray Williams, who passed away on October 8th, 2021. And whereas Ray was a man of many passions but none surpassed horses, in which he developed profound understanding of equine behavior and gentle techniques that could successfully bring out a horse's true potential. And whereas Ray was the driving force behind the Marvin Area Recreation Equine Show, which for many years brought great attention to Marvin's equine heritage. And whereas Ray served as the chairman on both the planning board and the Parks Recreation and Greenways Board for many, many years. And whereas Ray was a lifelong student and teacher, as he loved sharing his knowledge about horses just as much as he loved learning something new. And whereas Ray will be deeply missed by his wife Terry, his brother Richard, and the Marvin community. Now therefore, I, Joseph E. Bolino Jr., mayor of the Village of Marvin, do hereby proclaim Mr. Williams' birthday, the 19th day of February, as Ray Williams' Day. In the Village of Marvin, in recognition of his life and his significant contributions to the Marvin community. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the Village of Marvin to be affixed this 9th day of November, 2021. And I'll go ahead and sign that now.
And switch this out really fast.
Okay, you want to do that? Mm-hmm. So it'll be an easy day to remember. It's one day before my birthday.
Oh, really?
It's February 20th, so February 19th, that was his birthday.
Yes.
So he sits on the cusp of the Pisces.
Yes.
So he must have been very sensitive. No, he's a great guy. For those of you that are listening in, I've met him a few times. He was very, very involved in this community, and it's people like him that really, I believe, that continue to make Marvin the special place it is. So people like that, and when you have the ability to, you know, bring them into this community, make them a part of the community, you know, it can't speak enough for Marvin and what Marvin is about, what he brought to this community. So only met him a handful of times, but every time, I've always enjoyed spending time. We are truly sorry for your loss, and we want to express our gratitude for him with this proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you. Ray Williams' Day, I think we're going to talk.
We have, yeah. Ray Williams' Day, February 19th, from this day forward. So we'll look forward to that. Thank you. Anyone give a minute to, are we allowed to have anyone comment if they want it? I know, I don't know if his brother's still there.
He is.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, it's Richard.
Richard.
I'd just like to say, I'd just like to say thank you for bestowing that honor on my brother and for your very kind words, which very much appreciated. So thanks to all of you.
You're welcome. Andy, Karen, okay. Thank you all. Thanks, and thank you for being here. So we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda is reports and updates. So we have, first thing, manager's report. Christina?
I have anything, sir? Actually, I'm sorry, yes, I do. I need to schedule a special meeting, which we can do. Austin, you don't need to do that now, you can actually just get him to sign the notice.
Yeah, we don't have to do that now.
Okay. So we're going to have a special meeting for solid waste discussion on November 19th at 11:00 a.m. And we'll get you to sign all that paperwork to call that meeting. Yes, sir.
All right. And that's for waste only?
Correct.
All right. Put that in. Okay. So we need, we have plenty of time.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Moving on, we have planner's report.
Code enforcement report is attached in your guys' agenda packets. The only thing I'll add is that I know that there has been some advertising signs that popped up, and we're trying to get those addressed and removed as soon as possible. I mean, it's just a coordination between myself, Derek, and James, so those are being removed. But if there's any questions on that, feel free to reach out to me, and that's all I have as well.
Thank you. Next up, we have Rose's report. Christina?
Um, thank you. We are in the process of preparing the dry and storm policy. We'll hopefully have that at the December meeting.
Oh, I was going to ask, because I was looking in the minutes, we had a long discussion, but there was no, like, wrap-up when I saw the minutes, so we're...
Yeah, that's the one progress.
Okay, just, okay. So it just was, it seemed like in the minutes it was left open, like, we just discussed it, but nothing, no decisions were made.
Why don't they give a directive at the time?
Yeah, so we'll just say no decision was made for the minutes. That's all I was, when I was reading the minutes, that's all I found that was, just wanted to make sure, just for the record. Okay. So we'll be, that'll be in...
We're hoping to have it in December. If not, we'll have it in the first January.
Anything else on Rose?
No, sir.
All right. Moving on, deputies' report.
He's not here, assistant.
Did you guys get a chance, any questions? I mean, we can always ask him at the next meeting, but... Bob, you have any questions on the deputies' report?
I'm sorry, I was muted. No, sir, I do not have any questions.
Okay. Andy? All right. Thank you. Moving on, planning board chair report. Chairman Jones, is he on?
I don't think he is. I don't know, Hunter, maybe you might be able to take this, I mean, just kind of summarize.
Okay. Yeah, during the October planning board meeting, the planning board recommended the, recommended the council the approval of the small area plan for the Heritage District, which was going to, you know, be on the agenda tonight, but will be moved and considered at a later date. Other than that, upcoming, we'll be looking at the Form Base Code, the actual regulatory language for the Heritage District at their meeting next week. So that's really, just, oh, there's a good conversation, good discussion, good feedback from, from planning board members during the November meeting, and, you know, looking forward to see what comments and recommendations they have moving forward on the actual Form Base Code part of it.
Okay, so I don't see anything on here, but then the Heritage District Group meet as well recently?
Yeah, the Heritage District Committee met last Thursday, reviewed the draft of the Form Base Code. They recommended it to planning board with just some revisions, mainly kind of addressing any type of noise amplification and some of the, some of the special requirements for some of those uses. So all those will be in package and will be discussed for plan, during planning board.
Okay.
It's been another very good discussion, and unanimous, they voted to recommend approval.
Oh, good, good. Okay. Anything else? Are you there?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Hunter?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, we're going to PR and G board chair report.
You're good.
Chairman Barisic, who I don't show on the call.
Kim's not here.
Kim is not here, so we'll just move forward, since Kim's not here, and give an update. Next up, we have a consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved?
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Next up, we have a public hearing. Open the public hearing to consider adoption of the Marvin Heritage District Small Area Plan. Consider, A, consider recessing the public hearing until a further council regular meeting at 6:00 p.m. at Village Hall, date to be determined. So I need a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved, but we're not going to have discussion.
No, you're going straight to rescheduling. So where do you want, what date do you want to have, have the public hearing on?
Okay. So I don't know, Bob, if you had much time to think about this, and again, the reason we're doing this, we have, we are missing two council members, and we felt, given the, you know, how big of a deal this is, if you will, that I'd like to have all council here. So do you have any days or recommendations at the next? It should be at a regular meeting.
I would suggest either the December 14th or January 11th.
Okay. So we're looking at basically two dates, December 14th or January 11th. Do you particularly care which one?
No, sir. I'm good with either one. I think we have to swearing in of the new council person, so, you know, I don't know if we wanted you at the same time as in December.
We're swearing in multiple people. All of us are being, other than you and Jamie. And then we also have to, we're doing scheduling that day.
Your scheduling?
Are we doing, that's annual meetings?
We've already adopted the schedule for next year.
Okay. We did that, that's right, we did that last, last meeting, okay. So it's, it's up to you. I mean, I just worry about, is it getting close to the holiday? I'd like to have as many people, whether it's on WebEx or here. Have we considered moving it to another location because of interest, or no?
We have not.
Is there a way to gauge that?
Not really.
Okay.
Not really.
We could have it at the park.
We won't have any technology there, though. We won't have an internet setup.
Do we have the new village hall done by the January meeting?
Oh, yeah, we won't be standing, because we want a furniture, but it'll be right, it'll be lights on. Yeah, I wouldn't want to plan something like that when we don't, we just don't know what we don't know on when we're going to get there, but I, like you, Bob, I'm open either way, and I did not talk to Jamie on this. I'm hoping he will be there, assuming Kim will be here, so you guys...
I mean, I think this, you know, rather than drag it out, if we just go ahead and do it in December and get it done, would be the, my recommendation.
Okay. Bobby, okay with that?
Good with it.
All right, I mean...
And on this, we do have to be specific with, you may still choose to re-advertise, but you have to...
We will.
...to re, okay. We'll still do it right, recess it, just to...
So in the motion, you're going to recess this public hearing?
To Village Hall, there's the address. And it's December 14th?
So, yeah. Some motion to recess to December 14th, regular council meeting at 6:00 p.m. at Village Hall, 10,004 Newtown Road.
Do so move.
So moved.
Here we go.
All right. So you got that, Bob? We motioned it to December 14th, 6:00 p.m. at the next regular meeting. We're recessing it, so motion's on the table. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move that. Thank you. Thanks for making sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is there. Moving on, Village Hall, where we've got that.
So, yeah, progress is moving along pretty quickly. I don't know if Councilmember Wardman can add anything to this or not. I haven't actually been over there in about two weeks, but as you've seen the progression move along, they've had the curb and gutter poured, the asphalt's been laid, the first round of it. Sheet rock should be going up next week. Any other commentary? We had, actually had the well started the last couple of days, and they actually drilled down to 500 feet, and I told them to stop. They're getting 10 gallons per minute, and we're just going to have to adjust our irrigation to accommodate that, because that's pretty much all we're going to get unless we start probing other areas, and it's just going to be pretty costly to do so. So that's kind of where we're at. Do you have any other commentary to add?
I mean, they're, they're moving along very, very nicely. I've not been able to get down there this week, but as of Friday, I went down there, and pretty basically, they've got the porches about completed, the columns are up, they've got 90% of the sidewalk poured, if not all of it by now. They, they're working on connecting the sewer line, which is a separate project, but in conjunction. They've been working on that. It's kind of going slow because of county inspections. Every so, so far, they have to have it, have it inspected as they move forward, so it takes, it's a process, it takes a little while to get it done. But the inside is moving along really, really well, utilities, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, communications, all that stuff is, is all going in, and they're about ready to start closing up walls, which is, it's a huge deal, because they go quick from there, so.
So I noticed the tractor, where are the underbrush, are they, have they, we haven't approved anything?
No, you haven't approved that, yeah.
Okay. So there was a tractor back in there that looked like he cut a pathway.
That was a well driver.
That's a well.
Okay, that's for the well.
They had to get a path to get back in there.
Yeah, Derek and his guys actually cut that, cleared that out for them to get in there.
As, as we were doing the tour, I realized that we, I mean, did we learn anything more about the uplighting for landscape lighting?
That was going in after the fact. There's, according to the drawings, there are sleeves that have been put in for irrigation, which all, also can be utilized for low voltage lighting to cross over sidewalks and such, or under, I should say. So the low voltage will be done after the landscaping is done and the irrigation is in, prior to putting down the mulch, whether it be mulch or paintbrush, whatever.
You're okay, because Travis mentioned there was no electrical area, and he said you'd need one in the front and in the back.
There was a misunderstanding there.
There is an outlet over on the side where the air conditioning units are that would be utilized for the low voltage box. It just needs to be a regular outlet for that and can be run from there, so.
We did not put the low voltage in the contract, though, so we, we'll have to go back and do that.
I just worried in the evenings, I don't know how well the lighting is gonna light the sidewalks and you can accomplish that. I, opinion of one, I'm not a big fan of solar because I don't think it works that well, so I think we need something, um, landscape lighting or something like that, at least on the walkways, too.
We'll get that put together before it's time to get that done.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Did a quick tour of it, just for those of you out there, and it is coming along. It's very exciting to see it finally happening after eight years of me being in office and being here and for you being here. I bet you're excited as well, so. Alright, moving on, unfinished business. Discussion of 2022 Marvin Day has been removed and we'll postpone that to the next meeting. So the next up, first item is discuss and consider adoption of resolution to oppose Union County CZ application 2021-06 Ray Road Cell Tower. Hunter?
So, uh, so prepared tonight is just a resolution in opposition of the Union County application. Kind of after, you know, this has been put together through, uh, a lot of the input that we've received from our residents through public comment at the last meeting, even tonight and even in between, as well as all the information that I've gathered, uh, from the application itself, discussion with the county and from, um, the, the residents of Tolomor and Amber Meadows. So I appreciate all that stuff, bringing a lot of that to my, to, to the village's attention in all, overall. Uh, I had talked to the county. They are aware that we, this, uh, resolution's coming. Basically, they asked me, you know, if we adopt this tonight, we're gonna send within the minutes from the public comment from the October meeting as well as this meeting. And, uh, I plan on probably even packaging like the petition and other stuff that you, that we received part, as part of that public comment from those meetings. The resolution basically is just, uh, general. I mean, it states that, you know, based off the information we received that it's not consistent with our, our, the surrounding land use and zoning of, uh, the residential properties, specifically Tolomor and Amber Meadows, as well as the concerns of the environmental and, um, potentially environmental, uh, regulations that are enforceable by the state. So if there's any questions specifically on that, I'd be happy to answer, but it's, I know, I think everybody's kind of, should, uh, at least the, the two members, Mayor and Andy, are pretty up to speed on, on everything. I think that I've discussed everything with you guys. So, Bob, if there's any questions or if there's any questions from, from anybody else.
Who did you talk to at the county? Do I know where it's gonna be?
Bjorn, the senior planner. I also will mention that I spoke to him about going to Wuma. Um, and he said he'd be happy to come and, and answer any questions or present.
We, we need.
We always love when Bjorn comes to Wuma.
I mean, we need some sort of representation from the county so they understand. I mean, not only from Marvin, but the experiences that currently, for those of you in WebEx land, um, the Wesley Chapel is currently in a lawsuit with Verizon, is our understanding. So, and so they, they have their own challenges and they're trying, and then I think Mineral Springs mentioned at the last Wuma meeting that they were, I believe, successful in, in their lawsuit with a, um, and how they get it. So it's, it's, it's a little tricky, but we're learning as we go and in, in our last meeting that we had with the residents, Gary, Antonia, we, we learned a lot about maybe some angles we can take. But my, my goal is to, not only to bring it back up, to make sure we're all on the same page. I thought I saw in, in this that we were gonna have something for me to sign, or do we not have that to prove? Okay, alright, I knew, I thought I saw that. Okay, so, um, that's great and, um, I want something to hand them so they, they, they can have that. But I'm also going to try to get some sort of, I don't know if they'll come or not, the county commissioners, if, if at all. I know they can't, all of them can't come. But I will reach out to them to see if they are available for that, that time and date, just to, if anything else, just to hear the comments and stuff. And Gary, I think you said you'd make yourself available.
For sure.
And, uh, you know, what, what concerns me is I did get a call from AT&amp;T who, um, the representative was, you know, very nice and had a nice conversation, but without giving my, you know, which way. I mean, I thought there was gonna be a meeting. And that's what I recommended. I, she wanted a meeting with just him and I, and I suggested if we're gonna meet that we get before all of the board and even in a public setting, so it's very transparent. And I've yet to hear from them, so, which is unfortunate. I've got a few questions, trying to be fair. I would ask, show me three other places you've considered on this. And I don't know if that's happened yet or not, but, um, I think I'm more and more on the agreement that where they want to locate it doesn't make sense. And I think, um, if the county somehow sees that we're, they're possibly violating their own ordinances, if I'm not mistaken, and, and what, or maybe it's not an ordinance or.
They would be, they would be in violation with the state. Uh, I think between the emails that were shared with me is one that, what, that's this 200-foot stream buffer that's kind of in the question, which I think that the tower is being proposed within that buffer, um, and/or at least some part of the tower. And from what, from basically what we were conveyed is that there's nothing much that we can do that, that the county needs to take that into consideration when approving. And potentially, if, if the county still approved it, then the state would step in. Basically, what they were saying is that if it gets approved, it's still gonna maybe get upheld from the state level because of the, like, the proposal. Meaning that the application to consider, to allow the cell tower in that conditional zoning district could still be approved, meaning a cell tower in, in some way, shape or form could potentially be proposed on that property, but maybe not that specific location. So it, it, it just kind of depends. And I, and I don't know if, based off the lay of the land and the, the rest of the property, if there's any other, that, like, um, spot that it can be proposed. So, uh, so there are a lot of what ifs, but a lot of that's kind of, it's, it's out of our hands slash it's, it's sort of even the county just has to take that into consideration. And so that's why in the resolution, we're, we're trying to make sure the county's aware and that's why the village made the decision to, or, you know, asking the county commissioners to oppose it, uh, based off of that information.
And I will add, and the conversation we had at our last meeting is, um, as we were talking about this, um, someone, we made the comment, it's like, when does it stop? And what we mean by that is, like, the county, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, they are building a 300-foot tower, I'll, I think it's 380? 380? Foot tower that's gonna be located just south of where they are right now. And they will be leasing out that pole to providers, if you will, that could use that. So I guess if you can, my argument would be, when does it stop is, if you have 10 cellular phone companies that want to get their own service, but they don't want to lease, that potentially could mean 10 separate poles that they're gonna take the same process. So my thought is if, if Union County could potentially lease, this is something for council for us to decide on. If Union County could potentially lease, maybe this may be a legal question, too. Why couldn't the village of Marvin find through their own planning and figure out where the best locations for a cell tower would be within our jurisdiction and lease out to the AT&amp;Ts of the world, or Verizon, or whoever wants to join us where, I mean, that would create some things, but it would create a couple of things. A win situation for us where we have some sort of income stream from, from that and we're all providing it. And again, I don't know the legalities of it, but if Union County can do it, or plans on doing it, it would be nice to know if, and that's something I'm gonna bring up at Wuma, too.
We, I was gonna say, we would have to want to own the property to, to be able to lease it, so that's kind of step one. And I don't know outside of the park and Village Hall, I mean, that really is, any other property that would, that would allow us to maybe do that. So you kind of didn't get into, I know that during our October meeting, I think it was directed staff to, you know, coordinate with the county to find alternate locations and stuff. And I talked to the county about it, but the issue is you're, you're running into, you know, we can identify properties all day based off of the zoning or, or maybe, I mean, that's what this company's done. They pay people to do that to base off, find zoning and, and the, the drop zone area and so on. But the issue is you still come down to individual property owners' rights. And if so, if that individual property owner, you can identify a property that would be great for it, but is that property owner willing to either lease the land or sell the land for that use? So it's, it's, you know, we can, there's, there's a lot of different avenues to take, but I don't know if there's a perfect, right way to, 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 you know, approach it. We do have in our zoning regulations, the, the requirements for the, the large-scale telecommunications towers and we're working on regulation for the small cell. And I think, you know, to your point, I think that's, you were talking about the large scale and if, when company wants to do this, this and this. And I, that's where they got into the small cell. And it's kind of lower, lower.
5G ones.
Yeah, lower, lower view shed and but.
They're called small cell, but they're, and they do look small when they're up, but they're actually about the size of a refrigerator. But those do have a lot more state protections. And they probably should because they're not as big and cumbersome. The county can look into as part of the approval process, alternative locations, but they've got to see this through. It, it's before them. They've got an application. And bless you, they, we don't even know what the county's thinking. They may be against it, but they still have to see the application.
Right.
All the way through. And I've, I've been to zoning hearings before where I knew what the, uh, city council was gonna do. And people, they weren't as polite as y'all and they were, "I can't believe this, this is so bad." And, um, and there's, "Well, we appreciate your comments, not necessarily the tone, but we have to vote on this." And then they voted to deny it. So I don't know what the county, but they still have to send it through the process. And I think what you're doing, uh, is showing them, uh, you're against it, your constituents are against it, and it'll be in that packet. And I think it, I think both having a lot of residents, because they're also county residents, being there. But I think have, a resolution does carry some weight from the village. And I think it's well written, it's, uh, it's recognizing they have the authority and it recognizes denial, but it's not arrogant or in your face, which I think you need to do, you know, working with another government entity.
Yeah, and I, and you, what you mentioned about going in their packet, whatever we approve tonight and send with them actually goes into the application packet that is presented to Planning Board and then the commissioners. So all of this will be encompassed into the actual count, the conditional zoning application itself. So that's, that's one reason why it's being done, or the resolution's being presented and then that, all that supplemental, uh, information will be included with that. So in one way or another, it's going to be in those packets for, you know, during their consideration process. But, uh, as Chaplin mentioned, yeah, uh, it's, I think that's where a lot of people, um, you know, it happens that, why has this not been shut down and stuff like that? And it's because there's a proper application that's been filed and it's gotta go through that process. And we, we would have to do the same thing and then it's.
Is it conditional?
So, and that, and, and yes, it's a conditional zoning amendment, which that means it's all legislative. Which, that's what's interesting about this and I don't know if it was planned this way by the applicant itself. If I, if it was, it was kind of smart of them because cell tower is a special use in the underlying B6 zoning, meaning that it would have to go through the quasi judicial process to be allowed, um, which that's, you know, statement of fact and all that other stuff. This is just a legislative decision that goes straight to the commissioners in public hearing to allow it by right in that conditional zoning district. So.
So why was, I'm confused. It's conditional because the, the county can say no for any given reason, right?
Correct.
Well, as long as it's not arbitrary, breach of the contrabehind law. So they've, they've got to look at the underlying, uh, legislation with the cell towers, there's a state statute that provides a little bit more protection than normal things. The taller ones aren't as protected, as we said, the small cell is the way a lot of them are going now with the 5G. And, uh, the public is not as adverse to those because they're not as big.
And a lot of the also can blend in with the tree.
They'll put them on top of lights.
Or they'll go right beside, yeah, or go right beside street or go right beside stoplights.
Yeah, I think people complain about those, too, but these you get used to. After a while, you don't really see them. But the big ones, they need some, but they need to be in the right location. But there's been a request for this location, so the county's got to see it.
Yeah, and like I said, I, from my understanding, and, and I think this is on the applicant's side, when they do, I mean, this happens with any kind of a commercial entity. They have a formula, they look at the zoning, the, uh, what, the current land use, if it's vacant, what's the surrounding uses and stuff like that. And it's like, what's maybe the least path of resistance or what makes sense to them? And this one kind of did because it's on a vacant parcel, on a underlying conditional zoning, that's right off a main thoroughfare. So I understand why the applicant maybe chose this location. It, it's just, you know, they, they have a right, just as anybody does. If they go, they file the proper application with the proper materials, it's gotta be heard one way or another.
I just, uh, I guess my biggest question is, is that we have two, we have two existing cell towers that are right here in Marvin. That.
Marvin property.
Yeah, like, they're on county property, but they're in.
One's at the high school.
Yeah.
And one.
Behind the high school and right, and one right here behind Birch Industries. So what I don't understand is, is why there's this big aversion to co-locating on existing towers? Why aren't they looking into co-locating on the county's 380-foot tower that is a mile, 1.1 mile down the road? I guess that's what I, what I don't understand, and I know that there's gotta be some reason, but is it a legitimate reason? Or is it a?
Yeah, it's called follow the money.
Well, or is it a convenience locate, uh, real?
No, no, so, so think about it. If, if your business plan is to own a tower and, you know, have your own things, you're, you're not leasing it. So, and if you're allowed and the state allows or federal allows you to, to put them in, what, that may be their business plan. They, they don't see the, it's not as profitable to be renting a pole from someone. So they, they go around, they hire this company and they put up these towers.
Well, and I'll also mention, so the 300-foot one, from my understanding, is fully emergency services for, that, for the county. I don't know the full type, I, I don't.
This is all these questions that I have.
Well, I asked the county, I asked the county about that and I never really got a direct answer about it. Some of it does have to do with the technology that is with the tower. I mean, um, so I'm not sure if that, that, if that plays any part into that 300-foot one. The other thing that I'll mention is that with the co-location capabilities, the existing tower behind Birch and the other, I'm not sure how large they are, the height or, or the size, because they might not have the parameters for, or, or the, um, capability for co-locating from other telecommunications, uh, providers. And what that entails is basically, the tower's so far, far high, but you have a certain radius or a certain amount of feet that those, uh, the technology, the actual like data nodes or whatever, act, coming off of them, what size they can be and how far they can, um, project out. And so those might not have that capability and that's why this one's being proposed. There's, I, I'm not 100% sure on that one either.
So when you mentioned we'd have to own the land, so the only two potential would be either where Town Hall is being built or Eford Park.
Correct, unless we own some land that I don't know about.
Or buy some.
And Eford Park, you're subject to, um, restrictive covenants with that neighborhood? Because they need you to property.
Same as Village Hall.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, most of those, because.
I'm just, I'm not suggesting either one, I'm just trying to figure out.
Well, and see, that's exactly what the applicant, the City Switch has done. It's like, they don't own this land. They're leasing the land, um, from, uh, oh man, it just blanked out. The, the owner, yeah.
Rayville.
Yeah, uh, they're leasing the land for the actual tower and then City Switch slash AT&amp;T will own the tower. And then it hits, then, like, T-Mobile or Verizon can quote unquote lease spots off the tower for co-location capability. So it's, um.
Which answers your question.
Yeah.
And Mayor, you are right, they can consider that under 160D 933B3. A local government may require applicants for the new wireless facilities to evaluate the reasonable feasibility of co-locating new antennas and equipment on existing wireless support structures within their search ring. So they, they can, they can ask that.
Well, and that's.
Hopefully they will. My guess is this is gonna get brought up.
Yeah, well, if you, in the, in the application.
He's very excited.
The application packet itself from City Switch, it's, it hits on that. And that's, the way they are packaging their application or selling this tower is, the height of the tower is this lo, this large because it's providing the capability for other telecommunications to co-locate. So they're doing the counter arguments to that of saying, hey, instead of these other, other towers popping up, we're gonna have this one big one right here that promotes it. And, and Chaplin's very, is correct. And that's, I think, our word is kind of hits on that currently is that we, we try to promote co-location or if it's a tower because we want, we don't want to have a lot of towers spread out. We'd rather have one that maybe has these co-location facilities off of it. So, um, so yeah, I mean, like, I, I, I think the way the application and, and everything's being proposed is right. I just don't think, think the location is the right location. But I'm just, that, I mean, that's just my opinion and, and so.
They made a valid application, so it's gotta go through the process and I think y'all are doing all that you can with us.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around some of the reasons why it's, it was proposed, why it's being, you know.
There's also some interference issues. They gotta make sure that, um, their equipment doesn't interfere because all of the long-term leases with them, I've done some with the city of Rock Hill, we'll put them on the water towers.
Yeah.
They're complicated agreements because you, oh, the next person can't interfere with the prior and the technology changes. So they have to make sure there's enough spacing, location and all of the, the testing that there's not interference with others. Sometimes you can have that, but usually you try to, you try to put as many on, especially if you've got a water tower.
Yeah.
Whereas people don't notice and it's revenue for the government.
Well, and you'll see them, if you drive down 521 in Valentine there, where the transmission lines go across, they have, um, actual, uh, I guess you have the cell servant, I don't know what you want to call it, but the actual. they have actual, I guess you have the cell servant, I don't know what you wanna call it, but the actual, it's not, yeah, it's not the tower, but it's actually the data, the, the one that projects the service on top of those, like every other one. So it, it's, it is kind of, it's, it's interesting, and it's, it's, it's just tough, because yeah, I mean, a, as we heard in public comment, and we found out, it's like, yeah, the, the cell service issue, the, the service issue, I guess the lack of service is an issue. But it's just, once again, where is this, where is the better locations? And I'm not, I, I'm not sure if the county has, has asked that, I don't know if that came up during the public involvement meeting. I will ask, did you ever get the public involvement meeting minutes? Okay. Basically, part of the application requirement is that the applicant's supposed to provide minutes from the public involvement meeting that occurred on October 5th. None of us were there, we were at National Night Out, and I asked to receive a copy of that, because some of those questions might have got brought up, I don't know if they were, because I feel like we might then have some of that answered. But that would have been a time for us to ask, and I think it, it's valid that, you know, the mayor kinda suggested maybe having a meeting with, with council to ask those questions, because we haven't really had an opportunity to do so outside of that one time, which we had a prior obligation.
What, what are, what are the next steps in the process?
For, for us, if this resolution gets approved, then staff will kinda package everything together and send it to the county. And then we'll continue to notify the residents of the public hearings, I think, tentative leave right now. It is supposed to go to the county planning board during their December meeting, which I think was December 2nd.
That sounds right.
And, but, I, I, I did talk to the county, they are waiting on supplemental material from the applicant, and I think they have until like November 19, 18th, 19th, to get that, so then they can have the proper time to put it in the application. So, and then after that, if, if it stays on that timeframe, it'll go to planning board in December, and then the county commissioners will hold a public hearing in January, and then either vote at that meeting, the second meeting in January or February, I don't really know their process, but.
So logistically, we approve this resolution, we will present it to WUMA on the 18th. They will unlikely have time to get it to their meeting, which is usually the second.
If, if.
I'm just thinking, because what I would like is, I, I'm assuming based on just conversations, this would likely be accepted and adopted by the other communities. But how do they get that in front of the county commissioners as well?
My recommendation is, since, I think if we, if WUMA's on the 18th, and like I said, it, the, the applicant has until the 18th or 19th, if WUMA can adopt a resolution that day, they should be able to probably, once again, do the same thing and include that within the packet process.
So we'll make a motion to have a WUMA adopt this on behalf of their communities and.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a valid discussion, and I don't see why that.
Still not coming from the towns themselves, like us, but it's coming from, representing the town.
Yeah, other than that, I.
That, I mean, that, that holds as much weight as individuals coming from.
So if we approve this, then Austin, I'll have you send this out to the WUMA members.
And I don't.
Y'all still have, you adopted it tonight, you still have time to get it before the next steps, the next official steps at the county level.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, even if it's somehow surpassed, like, the resolution is not, for, let's say the surrounding municipalities are not adopted in time for the planning board meeting, now I can't, I'm, I'm gonna say this, I can't speak on the county's behalf, but I would not, I wouldn't think that they would not then consider that, or at least make sure it's aware to the commissioners if surrounding communities adopt resolutions in opposition. But, I mean, I think, yeah, as, as Christina mentioned before, it actually goes before the county commissioners, wouldn't be until, I think, January at the earliest. So if they do something by then, it should at least maybe either be noted by planning staff, or be included in the application packet itself, like ours will be.
Well, stuff like this is why we formed WUMA, so we're all sometimes talking about the same problems, we're all sharing and stuff, just different municipalities. So hopefully, we can get that. Since we were just presented this today, if it's okay to read it? Okay, Bob, do you have a copy?
I think I do, yes.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and read it just for the public. RS 2021-11-01, a resolution opposing Union County Conditional Zoning Application. 2021-06, City Switch Cell Tower. Whereas the Marvin Village Council's purpose is to represent the desires of its residents and to serve as a voice for the greater good of the community, and support the same for neighboring municipalities. And whereas a conditional zoning application for property located at 9921 Ray Road, tax parcel ID number 06201007A, is being presented to the Union County Board of County Commissioners to amend the existing conditional zoning 2017-002 to allow a 160-foot monopole wireless communication tower. And whereas the subject property abuts the Village of Marvin municipal limits, specifically the Amber Meadows and Tollamore subdivisions. And whereas the Marvin Village Council recognizes that many Marvin residents are not in favor of this proposal, and that the proposed tower puts a burden on the surround residential properties. And whereas the proposed application would not be compatible or be in harmony with the existing residential area. And whereas this proposed tower can pose a threat to the public health, welfare, safety, environment, and property values, either directly through the facility themselves, or indirectly by causing changes to the subject property and the surrounding parcels. And whereas this proposal may violate existing environmental stream buffer requirements on the property and surrounding properties. And whereas the Marvin Village Council understands the need of additional wireless communication facilities in our area to improve service. Now therefore be it resolved that the Marvin Village Council does hereby request that the Board of County Commissioners of Union County consider the well-being, quality of life, financial security, and safety of existing residents and taxpayers in the area of this proposed application. And be it further resolved that the Marvin Village Council does hereby request that the Board of County Commissioners of Union County deny the proposed application adopted this night, day of November 2021. Any more questions? Bob?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go away from our normal routine, and only because I see in, in the audience, we have the future-elect council member, which was trying to say something, Wayne Defford, did you wanna make a comment on any of this?
Andy had some questions about the other towers, the 380-foot versus the 160. The first thing that we had a problem with, if you talk to the city, uh, the county commissioners, they knew about the 380. You talk about the planning department, they knew about the 160. Neither one of the groups knew that there was two towers going up. First thing we had to do was to explain to them that there was two towers going up, and they go talk to one another. So it was our problem, the first time I was getting, you talk to a county commissioner, say, yeah, I know about this tower, it's 380 feet, we're gonna use the first response, no, we got 160.
Okay, so it's just an awareness thing, so.
Which happens a lot in government.
All fair, so. All right, that said, with no other questions or comments, I'll, I'll need a motion to approve this resolution. So moved. RS 2021-11-01, resolution opposing Union County Conditional Zoning Application 2021-06, City Switch Cell Tower.
He already said.
So moved.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Don't sign that one, I corrected the spelling mistake, I got your one for later.
One more step in the right books, and I hope. All right, so we can move on on that, right?
Yes.
And next up, we have new business, we don't have open topics, did we put open topics?
I accidentally left it off, that is my bad.
There was something that came up, and I was thinking as we were talking, and then I forgot to write it down, but that's okay. New business, a discussion of December 2021 Communications.
Really fast, I forgot to put the tree lighting on, the December communications, just be aware that I do know that we're having a tree lighting and a Christmas parade.
You better.
That's in the works, we're working on it.
A lot of years worth of work.
Who's, who's planning that, or?
Derek, Derek's working on it, Derek's working on that with the PRG board. They're gonna do a Christmas parade like we did last year, you know, might get you to get out that nice car again, drive Santa around.
Things not safe to be driving, I may have to do, oh, oh, I got Plan B.
Okay, got a Plan, okay. Well, but you, do that again, and we'll end the parade at the.
Still a nice car.
They're planning on, I think, ending the parade at the park, and then going into the tree lighting ceremony, and then lighting the tree at like 5, 5:30.
Okay, so are we reaching out to the high schools for the band?
Yeah, PRG's taking care of the whole thing, yeah, they got, they got it handled.
True, okay. Yeah, we just need Santa on time, so, Santa can't be late. I'm not gonna say anything else.
I'm still making jokes about that.
I'm his Plan B.
Oh yeah, your, your Plan Bs, start powering that beard up there, so.
Perpetuity in a 51 Chevy truck.
We have the suit, we do have the suit. Do you guys have anything you want me to add to this list, any other topics you wanna see? One thing I did wanna note is, last year we did a year interview newsletter that we sent to residents. I think one of the best things we sent out all year, we got a lot of good responses out of that.
Like a newsletter?
Yeah, just a year interview, kinda looking back at everything that we've been up to for the past year. If that's okay, I'm gonna plan to do another one of those, it'd just take the place of one of our weekly newsletters, kinda just go through Village Hall, Heritage District, various proclamations and legislation adopted this year, some of the other projects going on. You guys seemed to like it last year, so.
Well, I got no issue with it, it works. I'm in, I'm in favor of Board Council, Bob?
I'm fine.
Okay, so we'll go ahead, go ahead, you're, you're gonna take that on, you don't have any, need any other direction on that?
I'm good on that. No, it's not.
You're following it. Okay. Anything else?
Oh, go ahead and sign this really fast.
All right, so no comments? Or anything else on communications? Give me a second here.
I'm good on that.
All right.
See, I'm good on that, so you, you can move on.
All right, next up, review and consider adoption of Village Council minutes for the 10/28/21 work session meeting.
One, the reason you see these on here is we don't have a work session this month, so until we have a work session again in January, you're just gonna see an approved minutes every meeting, just so we can keep them rolling out.
And we'll just put them on the agenda, as consent agenda for a later time?
Well, no, we'll go, we'll just go ahead and get these posted, that's what we did last year.
Yeah, okay.
So you'll, you'll review and, and adopt this, this time for these.
Okay, so we're adopting these?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And if you have any changes, you'll adopt as amended.
Okay, so, do you have any changes? Bob, you have any changes on the minutes?
I don't.
I have one change, page three or five, under open topics, Bell Grove meeting.
Let's see, open topics, okay.
Says Mayor Polino spoke on his recent meeting with the Bell Grove neighborhood, and we're experiencing several problems with developers. I would just like to add, and the roads, drainage issues, and the amount of trees removed.
Roads, drainage issues.
Those were the three big.
Yeah, just, just.
And what else?
Yes, yes. I, I said there are problems with developers, and their roads, drainage issues, and with the amount of trees being removed, and the amount of trees being removed, I should say. I would add that.
Okay, I've got that.
And then, the only thing I had on four of five, B, you, you went in to discuss, and I think I mentioned this, or council discussed the item in debt. I just add, no decisions were made.
Mm-hmm, I generally leave those open when you have a discussion, just because you don't give direction. But I can add that text to you.
Yeah, just add that if you would, just, as I read it, I'm like, okay, they talked about it, but, you know, saying that we did make a decision, and, or, you know, is probably a little clear, which means we will be making a decision at that same time. Okay, we're still doing agenda items too, right? Okay.
So is he good on this?
Yes.
Okay.
So I need a motion to approve, as amended, the minutes for the work session dated October 28, 2021.
So moved.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have agenda items, review of action items.
This'll be really quick, we don't have many. We will reschedule and re-advert, so we've, we've rescheduled, we're gonna re-advertise the public hearing. Hunter is going to send the, the resolution for the cell tower to the county, and we'll send it over to the WUMA folks.
And I plan on probably coming to WUMA too, but I will make sure that it's coordinated with the county to, they, he, when I talked to him last week, he basically said, let him know when, and he'll try to coordinate you in there.
I mean, I'll reach out to the county commissioners, as the ones that I know personally, that I could just say, hey, it'd be great if you could be there, just to sort of get a heads up before the heads up, if, if, we could send an invite to them, I think it'd be great. And I think they can handle that down in.
Where are we at?
Where at, Mineral Springs.
Mineral Springs.
Yeah, Mineral Springs has a, has a nice, nice meeting room.
Yes.
And just on that, though, anytime you wanna come to WUMA, you're welcome to come, because it's, it's usually a lot of good information for you.
Got it, yeah.
Yeah. Anything else? Austin?
That's all I got.
Okay, review of ongoing action item list.
Lot of lists.
So I got something to make, make Derek happy.
Oh, Lord.
And, and this is the opinion of one.
Why did I list?
Because, you want mine?
No, I, I think it's here.
So at the very bottom, 10/28, we talked about researching a design cost and liability installing a dog park. And we learned at WUMA that Wesley Chapel has one.
It's called Dogwood Park.
Dogwood Park. For now, I, instead of a separate budget item and, and getting all this, that's not that far away from here. And, you know, I think it would be a, an answer right now, I'm not saying that we would say no to this, but I don't know if it needs to be pursued, we, we, I'm sure there's a lot of dog lovers that would love it at Eford Park. Right now, with all the things we got going on, I don't know if we need to bring this up on the.
Yeah, I, I think communication going out as to the response to that question would be appropriate, so that the village residents know that we do have one reasonable distance from Marvin.
I'm sorry, say that again, what's the direction?
They want a communication to go out, that there's one neighboring house, if anyone wants to attend.
Then Wesley Chapel's okay with us doing that?
Yeah, I mean, it's a public.
Okay, I'm just saying.
Also, we can.
Well, they threw out the information, they were happy to offer the information that they already had one. As we were discussing, possibly going together on a collective one, they.
We'll, we'll continue to pursue the Part F, we'll go through that, that route, so that's, that's gonna be a lengthy process, but we'll continue to.
Well, and, and I think it's a great idea, if we did have, and, and I think that truthfully, any coordination with neighboring for public use spaces would be, you know, would be welcomed, because it saves all of us, you know, and, and can be collectively used. But in the meantime, there is actually a facility to, to help, you know, accommodate this, this desire, so that's at least a good start.
Yeah, we can also go to them if we decide to do one, and look at what they did from a policy or liability standpoint, and.
It's all that.
Um, is there anything else you guys wanna check out over the list, check off? Joe, I know you said we, we kinda missed, missed the flyer there for the car show. We can do something later if you want, next opportunity.
I still think we gotta put a flyer together for the car show, but they had a really, really good event last Saturday, which was 200 cars showed up at the high school, and we had to go into the kids' parking lot. So it was well-attended, and I have a lot of people that I can network through on that level. that I can network through, um, on that level. Now, I think there was talk about just Marvin stuff, but if we just do Marvin, we may not get that many people attending. So, um, I don't know how, how big, because these people come from everywhere. These people, people this weekend were coming down from Denver, um, North Carolina. And, uh, it was, again, a nice event, but eventually, depending on how we see the return, um, maybe it gets down to just Marvin or the surrounding communities and, and keep it at that, but it's hard to do, especially when you're in those groups. Bob, you probably know that as well as I do, so... And thanks for coming Saturday, by the way. Even though we didn't get much time to speak, so...
Did you win?
I, I got the vice principal's award, so I, I think, I, you know, 'cause I'm a volunteer and stuff that, you know, I, and, and I get poo-pooed because I trailer the car around a lot, so it doesn't get us mileage, so... But there were some great-looking cars there, so...
Yeah, they were, there was.
Yeah. Um, anything else on this list?
I'm good if you all, I'm good if you all are.
Okay, that's it.
That was the only thing I was gonna bring up was about flyers, but, uh, you know...
Yeah. Yeah, we already, we already realized we, we missed that, so... Um, next up, count some comments. You wanna go first, Bob?
Uh, yeah, I, I wanted to, uh, first off, um, congratulate, uh, Wayne Deffrich for coming in and being a new councilperson and serving the community. I was, um, pleased to also see, uh, the reinstatement and election of, uh, Councilman Warpin in Vandenberg. And of course, last but not least, yourself, Mayor. I think, uh, with the rhetoric that was on social media, I, I'm really proud to say, and I know we all felt that way, that we have a good thing going. Uh, we're doing a very solid job as a team. And I'm saying, all of us, I mean, I'm talking about everybody who's there in the village, uh, working as well as all of us on the board. I mean, we're really getting things accomplished. We're dealing with issues, i.e. the cell tower. And we're seeing issues that come up as simple of a thing as a dog park. So I mean, I'm really proud of the way the election turned out. And, uh, the villagers need to look at, we're gonna have some good years ahead.
Thank you. Andy?
Well, I just, uh, wanna thank everybody that, uh, that voted for me and, uh, the rest of us. And, uh, I'm glad to know by your votes that you feel like I'm doing a good job in this position. So, uh, I'm looking forward to continuing to do the, a good job in this position. And, uh, we'll see, uh, see what the next four years brings.
Thank you. I too want to say, um, I'm, I'm always humbled when it comes to this time of year because we're asking residents to, uh, take some time out of their day. And, and most of them do rather than absentee ballot, which my wife did, she was out of town. But, uh, um, she voted for the right one this time, I guess. She voted for me.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
Long story on that one, but, um, but no, seriously, uh, you know, I, I continue to be humbled and, and I, I see the power of, uh, uh, this, this community coming together and, and really appreciate their, their support. And again, the only way we can gauge this sometimes is, is by, um, I always say, we only hear from people when there's a backhoe in their backyard. And, uh, right now, the backhoe is the cell tower. And we're trying to address that and hopefully we're successful with that, even though I'm reminded by, um, the people who are making, or are trying to propose this, that we don't have a decision in this, but I think we do. Um, but I, I, I am humbled in, in, in you guys coming out, taking the time and, and supporting us. Uh, congrats to Wayne, our, our newly-elected, uh, council member. Look forward to working with him. And I think he'll be a great asset, as he already knows. Uh, we'll, we'll be hitting the ground running with him on the, uh, with the Heritage District as well as, uh, I'm sure, jump right into the cell tower, uh, and I'm sure he'll be a part of that. Um, and also, obviously, to Andy and Mayor Pro-Ten, Kim Vandenberg, um, it was great support. And, uh, and again, for me, your votes are, are very much appreciated. So thank you for that. I'd also like to, um, just take a minute and thank, um, not only, um, Hunter for meeting with us with, uh, the, the community members who came to us and wanted a meeting. I'm speaking about Gary Vell, who I think is representing a lot of the people that were on today. And Tanya, um, we had some really good discussion and some ideas um, that came out with this and, and how we approached this. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we can be successful with what we're trying to get accomplished with that. And, um, it, it really means a lot when people like this take this